All right. Good evening. Thank you for being here. We appreciate your attendance at this public information session. I'm Kathy Garcia, and I get to welcome you to CPS Energy's headquarters and to our Board of Trustees meeting room. With me is our Board Chair, Dr. Francine Romero, and our Chief Legal Officer and General Counsel, Shanna Ramirez. This session is designed to give you a clear understanding of what it means to be a Board of Trustee. Sorry, it sounded like it cut out there. And what we mean by that, the responsibilities, the time commitment, and the impact that you can have. So I'll begin by providing an overview of CPS Energy. Shanna's then going to come up and provide a more detailed overview of the roles and responsibilities of our board members, followed by some closing remarks from our Board Chair, Dr. Romero. And afterwards, then we'll open it up for your questions. By the end of this session, we hope that you'll leave well informed and perhaps even inspired to take the next steps in applying or encouraging someone to do so. But before we begin, and it is customary for us at CPS Energy to do this, we are going to start our meeting with a brief safety message. So Brandy, if you can come up and help us with that?
I will start with our evacuation process, followed by a safety message, our moment of silence, and the pledge of allegiance. I review the evacuation procedures so that we're prepared to be safe in the event of an emergency. If you hear the fire alarm, follow the instructions announced through the P A system. If asked to evacuate, use the glass doors to exit outside and verbally alert others. We'll move to the main parking lot in front of the building or the AT&amp;T parking lot at McCullough and Brooklyn Bridges. Our security team will be watching and will notify the appropriate emergency services. Lastly, we also have employees nearby who are trained to administer first aid if needed. Safety is a top priority, and while we hope this information is never needed, we want to ensure we are prepared. Additionally, we ask that you remain seated during the duration of the meeting, keeping the aisles clear, and do not block any exits. Gas leaks. Recognize, react, and report. Recognize the signs of a gas leak. Smell. Gas has a distinctive sulfur-like odor, like rotten eggs. When you smell this, please recognize it, react to it, get to a safe area, and then report the issue. Sight. You may also detect a gas leak through sight. You may see bubbling water if wet or dirt blowing in the air. Recognize, react, and report. Sound. You may hear hissing, roaring, or whistling noises. Recognize, react, and report. Report the leak from a safe location and call 911 and CPS Energy Gas Emergency Number at 210-353 HELP. Now I'll ask that you will stand -- sorry, that you will stand with us in a moment of silence for our neighbors in the hill country. If you remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated, and thank you.
Thank you, Brandy. For my part of this presentation -- we should have had that up. Okay. For my part of the presentation, I'm pleased to walk you through a brief but meaningful look at how we serve, who we serve, what drives our work, and where we're headed. I'll also share a bit about our leadership and our governance model and how customers can stay connected and informed with the utility. So this slide provides some great data points, and I'm just going to highlight a few. We are the largest municipally-owned utility in Texas. We are the largest municipally-owned electric and gas combination utility in the country, so that means we're two businesses. And it takes roughly 3,600 employees to run and operate this utility. We serve nearly 950,000 electric customers, and of those, we have roughly 389,000 natural gas customers. And we're very proud of our credit ratings, which are reflected on this slide. They reflect our financial strength, something we're very, very proud of. So there are about 70 municipal-owned utilities in Texas, so we're one of those, and they can be structured in a number of ways. CPS Energy is what we call a fully-integrated utility. So on this slide, what that means is that we own and operate most of our power-generating facilities. We own and operate the poles and wires used to transmit power, and we directly serve and bill retail customers for their energy services. So we are, again, integrated. We have all of those businesses under one roof. So narrowing in on this, looking at generation. This slide depicts where our power sources are located throughout Texas. This is where we get our power from. It's not necessarily where we serve, so I want to be clear in that, but this is a regional look of where power sources are located and where we get our power from. You can see that different areas of the state are better suited for different types of generation, and this slide includes our new natural gas plants that we acquired in Laredo and Corpus Christi, and it also shows S T P, which is the South Texas Project. That's a nuclear power plant that we have been part-owner of for almost three decades. And of course, this also shows various sites of where we have our wind and solar power. So while we just looked at it geographically, where we get our resources from, this slide provides a detailed breakdown of the types of power that we generate and then their respective proportions within the portfolio that we have. So as you can see, we have it all. We've got wind, we've got solar, batteries, coal, natural gas, and as I mentioned, nuclear. This "all-of-the-above" approach balances cost, reliability, and sustainability by leveraging the strengths of multiple energy sources. It has proved well for us for a long period of time. Now, this slide does actually depict coal, and I do want to mention that as part of our generation plan, we will be converting one of our coal units to natural gas in 2027 and retiring the other plant in 2028. So that will actually phase out coal from this portfolio over time. And I also like to highlight that we're number one in Texas for solar generation, and we're among the top public power wind energy buyers in the nation. We are also the fourth-largest generator in ERCOT, and ERCOT is an acronym, and I will come back to that shortly. So coming back to the fully-integrated utility, CPS Energy is both a transmission and a distribution utility. Oftentimes, you'll hear that referred to as a T D U. When we speak of transmission, this refers to the high-voltage transmission lines that carry electricity over long distances, such as from power plants to substations. You'll hear sometimes people refer to this as the major highway. The distribution system takes electricity from the substations and delivers it at lower voltages through local distribution lines to individual customers. Sometimes we think about that as the local roads we travel versus the big highway. So CPS Energy is both a transmission and distribution provider, and this slide reflects data points specific to that line of work. We are the sixth-largest transmission provider within ERCOT. So you also heard me mention that we are a combination utility, both electric and natural gas. So this slide focuses on our natural gas business. CPS Energy is a local distribution utility, a local distribution company, so again, an L D C, commonly referred to as an L D C, which means for the most part that we pick up natural gas from the city gate and we deliver it directly to homes, businesses, and other end-users. We have some natural gas transmission lines, but for the most part, we have a whole lot of natural gas distribution lines. And in this instance, CPS Energy is the fourth-largest L D C or local distribution company in the state. So you've heard me mention ERCOT, wanted to come back to this. ERCOT is an acronym that stands for the Electric Reliability Council of Texas. ERCOT's actually two things. It's a geographical area in the state where there is a shared, connected transmission grid that transmits electricity to customers. So you can see on the picture, it's not all of Texas. The Panhandle in East and West is not in ERCOT, but for the most part, 90% of the state is in the geographical area that we refer to as ERCOT. ERCOT is also a nonprofit corporation that manages the grid and the sale of electricity over it with regulation from the P U C and state laws. So an area and an entity. We participate in ERCOT both as a generator and as a transmission owner-operator. So reflecting back on being, again, a fully-integrated utility, I've spoken to generation, I've spoken to transmission and distribution, and now we'll look at customers. When we talk about our customer base as a utility, it's really important to recognize the wide range of individuals and organizations that we serve, each with distinct needs, usage patterns, and service expectations. This slide reflects where -- what are the most common main categories of how customers are classified. And understanding the diversity of our customer base helps us to tailor our services, our programs. It offers -- we can offer help to those in need when we understand those needs better. We hopefully can improve customer satisfaction by knowing the customer base, and we can appropriately plan for future infrastructure and resource needs. So to dive into this just a little bit deeper, this slide shows the range of programs that we offer to help customers manage their utility bills. From low-income discount rates and payment plans to energy efficiency support, these programs are essential to ensuring that everyone has what we hope is safe, reliable access to electricity and gas. There's a number of programs up there. We've been speaking and highlighting a lot of these at our recent board meetings, and we also go out into the community and promote these programs and try to make sure we reach as many as we can to enroll as many as we can. And continuing with our proactive approach to help our customers, we have partnerships with over 200 agencies and organizations in our community, and many of them are highlighted here on this slide. The green circle of bundled support represents kind of a one-stop-shop, where if an individual or a customer comes and looks for assistance, there's a strong possibility that we can help in all those areas at one time, hopefully making their time very efficient in what we're trying to do. So all of this information that I've shared with you to this point is being conducted in a very rapidly evolving energy landscape. At our board meetings, we've heard our board and our C E O talk about this quite a bit. To navigate this landscape effectively, it's critical that we utilize both a short-term and long-term strategic plan. Our Vision 2027, which is up on the screen, has helped us to be agile, to be responsive to customer desires and needs, and to align near-term actions with approved budgets and resources. And when we created and approved Vision 2027, that was several years ago, so at that point seemed a little bit more longer term, but we're in 2025. 2027 is right around the corner, so this has been the strategic plan we have been executing to. And it's really helped set a foundation for a longer-term transformation, which is to our Horizon 2050. So at the same time, long-term planning is where we set our vision for the future. It's how we prepare for the deeper changes that are going to take years to perhaps realize, and it's intended to be in a complementary fashion. So these strategic plans help us manage risk, drive performance, and build a stronger future for our customers, so they work together in tandem. So all this work that's guided by these strategic plans comes together under utility leadership. So this slide highlights our current Board of Trustees. Their leadership, their foresight, and honestly, the deep sense of responsibility are what keep us all focused on our mission. The mission was on the Vision 2027. I may not have quite pointed that out, but you can see that the board that we have, it's very diverse in experience. It's got a wide range. We always make sure of one from each quadrant, so you have geographical diversity, you have thought diversity, you have background diversity. All of that's very important. And then we have our senior leadership team, led by our President and C E O, Rudy Garza. Steering a utility through today's rapidly-changing energy environment requires not just expertise but vision, resilience, and a deep commitment to our customers and our community. And so while I'm up here talking about our leadership, I'll take a moment of privilege to say this team leads by example, and I believe we work very harmoniously with the board to accomplish the things that we try to do for our community. So most governing decisions rest with our leadership and with our Board of Trustees. We're fortunate to have our Community Input Committee, which consists of 19 members from the community. They provide input and feedback on operations and various programs. They serve as a vital bridge between the utility and the public, helping ensure that the community's voice is heard, and they offer recommendations to the board. There are a few items by which we must seek City Council for approval. Those items are listed on the screen. Issuance of debt. So while we have our own board, we are still owned by the city, and we go to the city to receive permission to issue debt. If we were to use eminent domain, we'd go to City Council in order to receive the approval to do that. Anytime we're going to have a retail rate adjustment, that's something that goes to the board and then also to City Council. And then the City Council actually votes to confirm our board nominees. And then lastly, we wanted to share ways for our customers to be able to stay in touch and informed on the things going on at CPS Energy. This slide -- oh, where'd it go? There we go. This slide shows a variety of ways to do that, so we hope that you're receiving those alerts, you're receiving the information, the press releases, and if you're not, these are ways to become connected or to see anybody here that's with CPS Energy and will help you do that. So now, I'm going to turn it over to Shanna, and she's going to speak a lot more in detail to the roles and responsibilities of our board.
Thanks, Kathy. She made speaking forward but looking backward and operating a clicker at the same time look really easy, so prepare to be amazed at how difficult it can get. I'm going to talk to you all a little bit about the trustee roles and responsibilities. As you all may be aware, the Board of Trustees, once you are on the board, represent all of the customers in the service territory that we cover, but four of the trustees are chosen from each of the four geographic quadrants. I know that is confusing. I think a lot of people think analogous to district council areas, for instance, that represent the constituents of their district. We are not like that. The geographic areas where you're chosen from, but then once on the board, you represent the interests of all of the customers. New members are chosen by the existing board, so that is the process that we are starting now. There is going to be the general application process, but then once all of those that are qualified and have submitted an application have done so, then the board will review those and select the next trustee out of that group. As Kathy mentioned previously, then that selection is voted on by a majority of the board, and once approved by the board goes to the council to confirm the appointment. The board is the governing body of our utility. Essentially, what has happened, because we are a municipally-owned utility, the city as our owner has delegated all of the responsibility for the management and running of the system to our independent Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees has then delegated the management of that system to the C E O and those employees under the C E O. So I just lay that out to explain to you. Again, I think sometimes folks compare us to other entities in the area. SAWs, I think, is the easiest comparison because it's a sister utility. Their governance structure is different than ours, so in ours, again, council has delegated the responsibility to oversee the system to our independent Board of Trustees, and that's the governance structure that we have. As that, you are, as trustees, authorized to make the rules and regulations governing electric and gas service, including customer payment requirements. I'm sorry that I was looking backwards and reading that, but I pulled that directly from our bond ordinances. The rules that really cover our governance structure are spread out all over the place. So if you ask me some questions about the governance structure, sometimes I feel like it looks like I'm pulling from a bunch of different places, and I am, but part of it is set out in the Texas Constitution that states how municipally-owned utilities can be run. Part of it is in our city charter, and part of it is in the bond ordinances that list how our system is run as part of the rules we've agreed to follow in issuing all of the public debt we have issued, all of the bonds. So we have to follow all of those sets of rules in our governance requirements. I talked a little bit about our quadrants before. Our quadrants are designed to have about the same number of folks in each of the four quadrants. It is periodically reviewed to make sure that that stays appropriately mapped out. The rule for that is based off of periodic census, and the decision to change that is in the hands of City Council. Right now, you can see where our current board members were selected from. If you are here and interested, I hope that you're interested in here for Quadrant 2 because that's the one that we are filling. In terms of the board authority, again, you know, Kathy went over the four areas that we still go to City Council for, and the board does a whole lot of the rest of the stuff. Some examples that she's laid out there are the budget, major strategic plans like the generation plan. There are a number of things that, based on the dollar amount in our supply chain procurement process, require board approval. It's generally dollar threshold based on various types of service. And the selection of the President and the C E O. The President and C E O is the one employee in the organization that reports directly to the Board of Trustees. We have a couple of other folks that, although they report to the Board of Trustees in terms of reporting information, for instance, our Vice President of Audit reports directly to the Board of Trustees administratively. So for, in terms of managing performance and employment context, he reports to somebody else, but the President and C E O is the board's single employee. Again, the difference really in the way that CPS was designed, and I take a lot of pride as a process and governance nerd, and I can sort of wink at the chair because she is one as well, it really was set up beautifully. The independence of the Board of Trustees that was delegated by the City Council allows us to operate very differently than some other municipally-owned utilities. The key to that is that our board is not advisory in nature. It has the full governance authority to set the rules, regulations, and policies of the company. And I say this with absolute neutrality. It is independent of City Council, and there are a lot of positives and negatives to that, but it is outside of a political system. It is simply an ownership structure. The governance is within the Board of Trustees. The board really does manage a tremendous amount of assets, make decisions that are critical for the strategic development of the entire enterprise, and really, in my opinion, the development of our entire community. We are essential to the continued stability and growth of our community. Having good, reliable, affordable electric service is essential to our residents, to our existing business customers, and to attracting new business customers to the area. I've listed the responsibilities of the Board of Trustees. At the risk of embarrassing myself, I will take a look back. I think I'm going to trust that you all to read. Also, I don't have on my glasses, so I can't see that far, but really, I think the critical ones I want to hit are the partnership with the President and the C E O in setting critical strategy for how we do our business. In terms of developing that Vision 2020 and the Horizon 2050 that we talked about a little earlier, that is the level of guidance that we need from our Board of Directors. They do review and approve our business plans and our budgets. They do set critical policies that set the limits and the boundaries within which we operate. They understand, you know, provide oversight and monitor the performance of the C E O. You know, that is critical. Again, that's their only employee, and so the alignment of the expectations for the President and C E O with the rest of the enterprise is how that guidance is pushed through. They review and approve large financial transactions. I talked about some of the procurements, but they're also required to approve any major issuance of debt, as Kathy talked about. They look at our financial plans and policies, our lending programs. Any major financial structure that we have, they're going to be required to approve those. They exercise oversight regarding our risk mitigation. You know, they take a look at what are the gaps that we have, what are the risks that we run in our business, and how are we seeking to limit those, and give us guidance on that. They also set the tone for ethical behavior, professional behavior, and the type of things that we should be doing to preserve the public's confidence. We are very much aware that we are a publicly-owned asset, reporting to the public in every way, and so the trustee's ability to have very spirited debate about really tough topics, but in a way that is constructive, that is collaborative, that works with all of our different stakeholders and with our city owner, really is an example that is set that is out there for us to all seek to follow. They serve as the customer conduit and liaison, whether they like it or not. As a trustee, you are the person that folks are going to come to with questions. Now, Chair Romero hasn't mentioned to me how many thank-you cards she has received so far for no reason, but she has mentioned a couple of issues that people have raised with her that they'd like to get better. I do think that it is an incredible act of service to be willing to serve as a trustee for a municipally-owned entity. There is a nominal dollar amount that is provided that is really designed to allow you to get to and from the meetings and step away from work slightly if you need to, but it hasn't been adjusted in a very long time, so I would call this largely a volunteer position. Folks are doing it out of a sense of public service and a desire to give the feedback from the community, make sure that our community has an electric and gas utility that is stable, that is resilient, and that is going to provide good service for the community at a cost that the community can afford now and in the future. So I'm extremely appreciative of our board and extremely appreciative of anyone that is considering being on the board. You will get to engage with the community an awful lot. I do think that there's a lot of, and I'm being serious now, a lot of really positive aspects in getting to learn more about and engage with all of our various stakeholders. As Kathy mentioned, each group of customers really does have different drivers as to what they expect, as to what they see as a benefit of service, their opinions on what provides value and what does not, and we really do look to our trustees to be those folks that are out in the community getting that unfiltered feedback, whether they want it or not, all of the time. So that is a huge portion of your duties as trustees. Trustees are also there, again, to speak and remind us of staying within the lines, following all the laws, and acting in a way that promotes trust. Trustees are fiduciaries, so what that means, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the enterprise and to the customer it serves. It's not the same as saying you have a fiduciary obligation to our city owner or to the specific interests that you think are more interests that you think are more or less important than any other, but acting in a way that serves in the best interest of the enterprise at all times. Preferred qualifications, they're all laid out here. I'm going to, again, I read more of the last one than I intended to, but I'm going to encourage you all to look at these. This is being recorded, so if there's, if you want to go back and look at what they are, this is also available on the information that we have online. The goals that we have in recruiting applicants and trustees, again, are diversity and experience in background, in subject matter expertise, in the things that you have experienced as a customer that might inform better policies, and the things that you've experienced in your life that might inform better policies for the enterprise. Right now, again, you know, Kathy mentioned, we do have a lot of different types of folks that are on our board, and I think that the diversity amongst our trustees has always been a really positive thing at CPS Energy, and it's one that we hope to continue. Our community's changing, so the people that are in it are changing, and I think that it's, it's always nice to see as broad as possible candidates that we can choose from. The board composition, for all of our trustees that are chosen from the four quadrants, you have to be a permanent resident of Bear County. You do have to be, you have to reside in quadrant two for this particular slot. You have to be a U.S. citizen. The term, the initial term is for five years and can be extended, one five-year term. And the compensation is set out, and again, set as a nominal, nominal amount, so I thank everyone interested in this position. The mayor is an ex officio voting member. That, that simply ex officio, for anyone that doesn't know, means that that, the person that is the mayor holds the position as trustee because of their position as mayor. So as the mayor, if the mayor ever changed, it automatically changed, and the new mayor holds the position. And the role of the mayor being on our board, as set out by our governance, is that the mayor is charged with the duty of keeping the city council informed of what CPS Energy is doing. So when the mayor sits on our board, they sit as a trustee, as a fiduciary of CPS Energy. Again, I think it's confusing because we're used to seeing the mayor sitting as the mayor with a fiduciary obligation to the city. Here, they sit as a trustee. In terms of the process going forward, I went over it a little bit in the beginning. So again, we get the applications submitted. The remaining trustees that are there on the board right now review the applicants that, and vote, sorry, by majority vote, and then the name is submitted to city council for approval of the appointee. And that process has always been confirmed at council, so that was the worst way to say this. Council has never not approved our appointee. This is the QR code. I'm going to leave it up. You can use this to scan for more details, and I think, yeah, there we go. So I'm going to leave it up while we do question and answers. But before we do Q and A, I'll invite Chair Romero up for closing comments.
Hey, everybody. Welcome. I have informal comments. I don't have slides. So I just wanted to say a few things, maybe about CPS, about the board, about me, which might help you as you're thinking about whether it makes sense for you to apply. So if you don't know CPS except as this entity that sends you a bill every month, it's, it's different getting used to it. I totally respect the safety messages, but it's weird the first time you come to a meeting and people start telling you where to go if there's a gas leak. It's like, is there going to be one? So there's, there's a definite personality here. I know Steve's probably a little bit more used to it. And I remember the first time I came here for an interview and just seeing this building, it was like, wow. It's so dark and scary looking, and I have to, I have to go in there. But that's just, that's just the shell, and you get used to that. And this is a really, really quality, high-quality organization. When I came on the board, it was right at a time of a lot of changes at CPS Energy. It wasn't very long after Winter Storm Uri. There was a lot of upheaval. The night before I was to go to city council, the CEO resigned. So things were very strange that day. But since then, this group has put in so much really professional, really quality effort into this. All of the chiefs, every person I've met that works here is really, really devoted to their job. I honestly have never met anybody here who, who wasn't good at their job and wasn't just a nice and welcoming person. So it is, it is a very welcoming place. Now, of course, as, as a trustee, you know, you're not an employee. And sometimes when I walk in here, like if I come in for a nine o'clock meeting and I'm walking in with all the employees and I feel like, oh, I work here. But, you know, that's not our job, to be here to make friends. It's, it's to exercise this oversight, and so it's a very important and significant role. So, you know, as Shannon talked about with the board, it's, it's a very important oversight function. I'm sure a lot of you who are thinking about applying have been on other boards and commissions. This one's very different. So I was, I was on planning commission, I was on zoning commission, I was on parks board. All of those are different, right? Because they're, they're bringing to you cases. You know, we want your input on this. And again, you're not making the final decision, you're just making a recommendation to council. But what you're not doing is overseeing the city's planning department or parks department. That's not your job on those boards and commissions. But here, that is our job. And, and so it is a very serious job. And you do take a lot of heat. There are a lot of people in the community who maybe get angry at CPS from time to time. Oftentimes, they don't have all the facts on that, but they're angry, and sometimes it's directed at board members. But at the same time, I appreciate that I am in a position where I can help people. And if somebody calls me and says, you know, my mother's 90 years old and hasn't had electricity in three days and nobody knows why, I can get that fixed really fast, and I appreciate how responsive people are. But, but bigger issues too. When people come to me and say, I'm in this or that sector and we're concerned about something, then I can bring it to the leadership, and I know that they were, they are very, very responsive. Just a little bit about me, I, if you think, oh, I don't know everything about electric generation, so I shouldn't apply, no. I didn't know anything about it. I, I did know how government works. I knew how public service works. I guess if I fit in one of those categories, it would be public policy. So, so I understand that. I understand that it is about laws and policies. And so I guess that's one thing I would encourage people to maybe read up on a little bit. I studied a whole lot before my interviews, to just understand that there, there are laws and policies that govern what we can and can't do here. And, and there are ideological ideas that get in there as well, but, but we need to think about what the law tells us we can do and what our governance structure tells us that we have to do. So anyway, don't think you need to be like some expert on how electric works. I've learned a lot about it, though, so that is really helpful. I have a full-time job. If you have a full-time job and you're thinking of applying, I would recommend that you definitely talk to your supervisor first and, and talk about how many hours they're okay with you doing this for. This job fits with my full-time job because I, the chair of Public Administration Department at UTSA. But even at that, there are, there are times where it's a little bit hard to wedge those two things in. So when you first start on the board, well, when you first start on the board, it is a whole lot of time because you have to be onboarded and, and learn a lot of things. When you start as a, as a trustee, not being the vice chair or the chair, it's not an incredible amount of time that you have to spend on it. For example, at my job, I'm allowed to have one day a week where I do just service, and that fit well into that. I would say when you start, it's not more than a total of maybe eight hours a week. The staff is wonderful. It's one of the great things is if I need information, I don't have to go hunt it down. I can ask somebody for it, and I'll have it right away. So that's really helpful. At some point, though, because the chairmanship rotates, you will become chair, and that's a lot more time. Be careful of the $2,000 a year stipend because I never used to have to pay, I always got a tax refund before this, and now I always have to pay taxes because they don't take taxes out. What else did I want to say? That was it mainly, just, you know, think about whether this is something you would really enjoy doing. I, well, I did want to say, it's that one slide where it has the little arrow between that your name is put into nomination until council votes up or down on you, that's a, that's a busy time. Lots of groups will want to meet with you, the person who is the nominee, because council simply votes up or down on the nominee. But they are prepared to vote down if necessary, and a lot of groups will want to meet with you, ask you all kinds of questions about CPS-related things. You will meet with, I have my water right here. Well, there's not much in there. It's hard to believe my, my full-time job is as a professor because I can't talk very long without coughing. You will have meetings with city council members ahead of the council voting on you. Some groups might ask you to fill out questionnaires on your positions on issues. There's, sometimes there are groups that want to push one of the people that we're considering, but they don't make the decision. The, the board makes the initial recommendation, and city council makes the decision. So it's nothing particularly unpleasant. It's actually good. You get to meet all the council members. Usually, they all want to talk to you ahead of time. But, but right in that period is when things can get very busy if you are the final nominee. So I'll stop there, and we are ready to answer questions. Yeah, thank you. I'll bring it. Turn this. The chair and the vice chair hold one, have a one-year term, and that's normally repeated so that you will be chair or vice chair for two years. Keep in mind, the mayor is not in that rotation, so there's only four people. So when someone comes on the board, they will become the vice chair pretty quickly, probably within a year. And then two years after that, they would become the chair. Should also mention that part of the responsibility is serving on committees. And we have, how many committees? We have seven committees. Well, technically six because risk management is a big committee that the mayor is also on, and that meets just like the board. But for the other committees, the mayor does not serve on those, and every one of those has two trustees on it. So every trustee serves on probably two or three committees, probably chairs one of those. And the committees meet quarterly, sometimes, at least twice a year, but usually quarterly we meet. That's here, in person. They are not open to the public. You get a lot of information in those, but it is, it is items that would then also be discussed at a board meeting. So the committees don't meet or independently set policy or anything, they don't vote or independently set policy. But that is some additional time that you will have to invest in this, and, yeah, you don't get paid for the committee meetings. You get, you get $150 for every board meeting, but not for committee meetings, and that's what adds up to $2,000 a year.
On the selection process, it's clear that the, the board makes the selection for new members of the board. But do they receive support or input from the staff in that process, or do they get advice from the city council members during that process?
Not from staff. And I'll, you might need to back me up on this. Of course, I, I'm the last trustee who was selected, so I haven't been through the process of selecting a new trustee. But I, I am the chair of the committee that is leading this process. So no, we would not get input from staff. It, it starts with the nominations committee. Can I say who that is? Okay. That is me, and trustee Steen are the nominations committee, and we will be the ones who are looking at, first looking at all the applications that we get, and then we will be the ones who conduct the first set of interviews. And then the board as a whole also interviews maybe three candidates who, that have been winnowed down from the bigger group. Council members are free to talk to us and express their opinion before it goes to council. I would say that council, any council person's opinion is, is an informal thought that they are sharing with, with those of us on the board. But then when it goes to council, then they get the final vote.
And I would just add that we do invite critical, well, actually, any stakeholder that we talk to. That includes our city owner. If you know someone that you think would make a good trustee that is in quadrant two, encourage them to apply. Each applicant has the ability to include letters of, of reference in their applications, letters of recommendation. So support for a candidate could be shown in that way. Staff's role is to confirm that applicants are qualified. So we confirm things like, well, all of the things that you put in your application, make sure that those are accurate, that you do live in quadrant two, that you are a U.S. resident, and that all of the good standing requirements are met. That's the limitation of our rule. But I would say staff also goes out into the community and encourages everybody that we think would make great trustees that are in, you know, that are eligible to please apply. So that's the encouragement to apply, I would say, is the, is the mechanism of endorsing or, or putting forward a candidate.
May I ask one more question? Yeah. A little about the governments and the interaction between the board and the CEO. Do all of the members of the board work and interact directly with the CEO, or do they only interact through the chair?
All board members can directly interact with the CEO. At any time, if a board member has a question and wants to call Rudy and ask him something, he is always available for that. Now, for the sake of efficiency in governance, there are certain things that generally go through the board. For example, if another trustee wants something on the agenda, that would normally go through the chair. So somebody can't call our CEO, and a trustee could not just call the CEO and say, put this item on the agenda. The, the CEO will probably run that by me, and I would probably say yes. But yeah, Rudy's very, very open, and, and Shannon as well. Board members, we do not get to call everybody on staff and start asking them questions or giving them orders. So in fact, we are encouraged, really, we're restricted in who we can reach out to, and Rudy is our number one call. Yeah.
Do you have DNO and director and officer and errors and omissions coverage?
Yes.
Yes, we do. So while acting within your duties as the trustee, you are insured through our policies,
No, I was just going to add, when I was on Planning Commission, one time we all got sued, all the planning commissioners, and I had a sheriff come and, and issue a subpoena at my front door. So it's not a fun thing to have happen, which I just thought I would bring up, but no, nothing like that happens here. So, no, we, we are covered with that, and we have insurance. So does the city for other commissioners, but I don't really know why that happened, but it did. Yeah. It's the meeting, Kada, and so Dave's always the same. Yes, the board meetings are once a month. Then we have risk management, which comes in there usually twice a year. We have that. And then, again, so maybe once every, about once a month, you would have a committee meeting. Very rarely, we might have a special meeting. And, and everything is in person. And for all the boards I've been on, this is the board where nobody misses a meeting. Everybody's here. We never hear like, oh, so-and-so can't be here, we have to change the schedule. No, everybody's here. And the, the meetings can last anywhere from hour and a half to five hours, which is, which is more rare, probably about, usually about two and a half's about average for us. But it's always on the last Monday afternoon of the month, although sometimes there's changes with holidays and things like that. And you get to park in the garage. Okay. Any else that you'd like to add? Yes, my, okay. Thank you all for being here tonight. I'm so excited about people being interested in this, and I'm happy to stay and answer some more questions. We do have another session coming up on August 12th, and that is from 12 to 1:00, 12 to 1:30, at the same location. But, you know, we are all open to answering questions. If you want to ask me questions, you can, I work, probably shouldn't say this, I work at UTSA, so my email is francine.romero@utsa.edu. It's easier to get me that way than through here, and I am happy to answer questions. If people are watching at home or later, let me know. Happy, happy to answer questions or to send you to somebody who can answer them for you. So thank you all. Thank you to staff for setting this up. Thank you all for coming tonight, and good luck with your application. We're excited about it. Thanks.
Thank you.